Last two-minute countdown. It's like watching the microwave for your popcorn. That's what we should do. Get a microwave in here.
Right now, I'm gonna be hungry for popcorn.
This night could have been metal-watching the microwave.
Happy to watch the microwave.
Always looking on the bright side, I appreciate that.
Oh, it changed. Okay.
Impressive.
Oh, you have magic fingers. See?
You had everybody fooled, you should have just run with it.
I thought it was perfect. I don't think it's cooling down. Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, July 18th, 2017 meeting of Middletown City Council to order. If you please stand and join me in a moment of meditation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Come in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here. First off, I understand Mr. Picard has some opening comments he'd like to offer.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get to that meeting--
Oh, that's right, yes. Excuse Ms. Bronson, thank you. I was going right to that.
I would move that we excuse her to--
Thank you. All right. A second. Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes. All right. Now, Mr. Picard, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to take a minute or two to talk about the proposal which I made several weeks ago in this forum. And last Friday, I had an occasion to meet with our city manager to discuss the situation and how I intended to proceed. I advised him at that time that I had done my own legal research and I consulted with a number of municipal law attorneys and come to the conclusion that although I believe my proposal may be legal, if we move forward and adopt it, we're exposing the city to some rather significant protracted, expensive litigation. And the point of my proposal was to help this city with its financial situation, so moving forward that proposal, which would result in even greater expenditures for legal fees and so on, just doesn't make sense. So at this time, I'm going to announce that I'm not moving forward that proposal. We will have to seek other alternatives. If I may, though, I do want to say that one thing which came out of that proposal was apparently a worldwide discussion of this issue certainly raised awareness of many people of the problems involved. I've been contacted by news agencies all around the world. It's amazing how fast work gets around. In any event, I will not be moving forward, so I do want to take a moment, though, to thank the city manager and the Law Department for their efforts and all of their time. And I want to thank my fellow council members for going through what I've put you through. And as I've indicated before, I do apologize for the troubles which I've caused each and every one of you. And hopefully, we can move forward and find some resolution to this problem. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your thoughts. Mr. Atkins, city manager reports.
Yes, Your Honor, not too much this evening. I did want to let you know that the city planner, Ms. Combs, has been doing some more work on the Ryan Homes community that we'll be visiting in Amelia next week. She has brought out some of the comparable houses in the Renaissance subdivision, specifically the Maple Street Home Collection that Planning Commission had approved in 2011. A number of the Ryan properties that you're gonna see apparently are very close to that. She has put together some information and forwarded on to me late this afternoon. As I get settled in tomorrow morning, I will get that out and give you more information so the Plan Commission and Council can look over those plans and have some, again, more information to make a better decision. Just a reminder to you, Mayor, as well, that we'll need to adjourn this meeting to the Tuesday, July 25th, at 3:00, so that we can get on the bus and take that trip. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Any questions from Ms. Atkins? With that, we'll move on to our citizen comments. First off, I'd like to invite Wendy Van Buren, who is with us from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and is our regional urban forester. Good evening. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you for having me. Really proud to be here. I have your 10th Tree City USA Award. It was awarded in Lebanon this year in May. In this box is a new flag, hat, high tack, also a little plaque to continue your long legacy of being a Tree City USA. I also have new street signs. If you could get them to the right people, that'd be great. Congratulations, you've been a Tree City since 2007. And the Tree City USA program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation and provides national recognition for urban forestry programs in thousands of towns across the country. I'm looking forward to your application to continue your Tree City designation this coming December and seeing you at the award program next April in Miami's, they're hosting this year, this coming year. So 45 cities, villages, townships, and an Air Force Base in southwest Ohio earned the Tree City USA designation in 2016. Ohio has 243 communities throughout the state who has received the Tree City USA Award for the work that they did last year. Half of all Ohioans live and work in a tree city and enjoy the variety of benefits that come from having more trees in your community, such as cleaner air and water, reduced stormwater, runoff, and increased property values. So I thank you very much for all the hard work that you, your staff, and your advisory board has done this year. I do want to let you know that I do have training available, so if any elected officials, staff, or advisory board, whether it's planning, park, or anything, are interested in learning more about maintaining and managing your green infrastructure, I'm more than happy to do that with them. So thank you very much for your time and energy, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Great. Appreciate you coming out for the presentation this evening. Great news. I have a couple comment cards this evening. First, I'd like to invite Abdul Shakur Ahmed down to the podium. There you are. Good evening. If we could get your name and address to the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Abdul Shakur Ahmed, 1413 South Main Street, Apartment 1, here in Middletown, Ohio. Good news. We're on the map. But we're not on the map. I sent out an email on Monday, July 10th, and it reads, "Observance of 192nd Anniversary on July 21st, 2017, Groundbreaking for Miami-Eary Canal." On the 21st of July, 1825, the first ground broken for the Miami-Eary Canal was on the land of Daniel Doty, founder of Middletown in Butler County, Lemon Township, Middletown, Ohio. The Historical Society has a monument at the corner of Yankee and Verity Parkway, Big Rock. And on that Big Rock, the commemoration reads that there was a, the groundbreaking took place on that date, 21st of July, 1825, with Governor DeWitt Clinton from New York and Governor Jeremiah Morel of Ohio and the future President William Henry Harrison. Middletown, Ohio turned the first dirt for the building of the Miami-Eary Canal. Also on Verity Parkway, as we come up to the Canal Museum located here at Smith Park in Maine, in Lakeside Park, right across the street, there's a monument that the Historical Society erected in 1995 commemorating the Miami-Eary Canal Underground Railroad Route that had safe stations located in North Main Street homes of African-Americans from 1830 to 1860. The names of these families were Rice, Hawkins, Colston, Burgett, Miller, Hardy, Edwards, Nutter, Davis, Smith, Robeson, Merritt, Armstead, and Mitchell. So we have markers in Middletown clearly designating the canal was here in Middletown. But there's a map of Ohio canals that was put out by the Ohio Historic Canals, the Canal Society of Ohio, and we're not on the map. So having found that out, I sent an email to the Board of Trustees for the Ohio Society of Canals, and it read, "I attain your email addresses from the Canal Society of Ohio website. I have a copy of Guide to Historic Canals, Map of Ohio Canal System, 1825, 1913. Nadine has your copies." I didn't have it earlier today. It is very interesting that Middletown, Ohio is not listed on the map. I have shared this mistake with other Middletonians, and they have concern as to why this oversight has been made. Thus, with the 192nd anniversary of the groundbreaking, July 21st, 2017, approaching, and the fact that it was 190 years ago on July 1st, 1827, that the first water was led into the canal, and on July 4th, 1827, the first canal boat sailed on the canal. I felt I had to share these true facts about the beginning of the Miami-Eary Canal, that it was in Middletown, Ohio. So with that being said, how might the Canal Society of Ohio be able to help correct this oversight and give Middletown, Ohio the honor and respect it deserves for being the place where the Miami-Eary Canal began in 1825? When I did that, I got a letter from the Miami Conservancy District, and it reads, "Dear Abdul," it's from Elizabeth Connor, she's the great Miami River Coordinator, "thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I would like to get a little bit more information from you about what you were thinking in terms of a celebration, and then I would like to do a small story and press release to cover this anniversary. As the coordinator of the great Miami Riverway, who's in charge of our bike path and everything here in town, anything related to water, I am in charge of marketing the region along the Riverway, and this falls right in line with the type of activity we promote. If there's anything further that you would like to recommend in the immediate or long-term future for the canal and Middletown, I will be happy to discuss it with you. Thanks again, Elizabeth." Well, we're meeting tomorrow, 4:00 in the library. So I've been doing this research on the Underground Railroad and the canal for some years now, and so we've hit jackpot. They want to take this and spread the news to 250 miles from Cincinnati to Lake Erie.
Oh, good.
So I had sent it out to the mayor and Roger Miller. Roger Miller is really on board. He's shared a lot of information with me. And he told me not to do anything this week because he had to go out of town, so we're gonna meet tomorrow with Elizabeth. And if you want to stop by, 4:00 at the library, we'll have quite a display.
Appreciate your work on this. Thanks for coming down with those updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Dr. Jan Adams. Good evening. If we could get your address for the record, please?
Dr. Jan Adams, my address is actually Southern California. My address around here is 4631 Elyssian Way, E-L-Y-S-I-A-N, and that's in Huber. I'm here to, really, to solicit your help. I've consented with the community center here in Middletown to come in once a week to teach a course. The course I want to teach is called Success. And what I'm teaching kids, generally 12 to 18, is how do you use what you learned in school to be successful? Not learn math. How do you use that math to become an accountant? How do you use that math to go on and create a life that'll make you successful? I always joke with J.D. Vance, and certainly everyone here has read Hillbilly Elegy, correct? I tell J.D., you weren't the first person from Middletown to go to Ivy League. A kid in 1972, one of Nadine's friends, went to Harvard, graduated from Harvard, went to Ohio State Med School, then on to Cornell, on to NYU, and then UCLA where he taught. And I know that guy, 'cause that guy is me. Now, that having been said, the reason I'm here today is I want to get as many kids as possible, generally 12 to 18, involved who can come and learn, how do you set goals? How do you get back once you've fallen down and things haven't gone right? How do you motivate yourself? How do you get people at jobs to hire you? You hear in the days where kids would complain that no one will hire them. Well, I make the argument, if you make yourself so important to that organization, they'll come looking for you. And there are ways to do that. And so those are the kinds of things we're going to talk about. Okay?
Well, appreciate your time, and thanks for that update. That's certainly exciting news. All right. With that, that's all the comment cards I have this evening. We can move to our consent agenda. Ms. Strayer?
Matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one mode of consent. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed and considered separately. First item is to approve the city council minutes of July 5th, 2017, to receive and file board and commission minutes for the Board of Zoning Appeals on March 1st, 2017, and March 17th of 2017, the Planning Commission of March 8th and May 10th of 2017, the Historic Commission of March 30th, April 27th, and May 25th, 2017, the Middletown Convention and Visitors Bureau, April 12th, May 3rd, May 17th, May 31st, and June 21st, 2017, to confirm personnel appointments for Chris Fugate, Patrol Officer, Police, Brittany Grimes, a Human Resources Clerk, and Anastasia Kinsworthy, Dispatcher for the Public Safety Division of Police, to receive and file oaths of office for Nicholas Gillespie and Matthew Hale. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to council comments. Start with Mr. Picard.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Would like to make everyone aware of the balloon fest that's coming up this weekend out at Smith Park. It's gonna be a good event, as well as the Warrior Weekend for wounded warriors. It's quite an event been held here for the last three years, I believe. A lot of warriors that have disabilities, they do a lot of different things, they have a lot of different programs set up for them, bowling, rifle range, they do the parachute, I don't think they do the parachute, but they do balloons, just so many different things that the warriors do. It's a great time, and I hope a lot of you come out and support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Mr. Bohannon covered the two items I have, and I'll just add, and I participated last year and possibly the year before. It is wonderful if you can support our veterans, please come out and do so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's gonna be some of my comments. Certainly a great weekend. It is very fitting that we can honor our wounded warriors and put on a good show for them. The laser light show and fireworks are always nice, and the balloon festival, always a great turnout. Here's, fingers crossed, for good weather this weekend, that the balloons can get up and everybody can enjoy those as they're flying across the sky. So a lot to look forward to this coming weekend. And as Mr. Atkins mentioned, council will be meeting as continuation of this meeting on July 25th for the, toward the Ryan Homes developments down in Amelia. That looks to be an interesting session as well, and look forward to the time and effort put into that. So with that, we can move to our legislation this evening. Ms. Combs?
Thank you, sir. Before we get started, there are two matters before you as an emergency legislation. I'd ask for a motion to waive the charter requirements regarding two readings in 30 days to enactment regarding Resolution R. 2017-13 and Resolution R. 2017-14.
I move we waive the charter provision requiring reading on two separate days and declaring an emergency for Resolution R. 2017-13 and R. 2017-14 as emergency measures and read one time only.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
The first matter will be Resolution R. 2017-13, Resolution consenting to and authorizing an amendment to the Liberty Township Joint Economic Development District contract to add territory to the district and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We had a presentation and discussion on this last time. Mr. Atkins, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I just had one question. Mr. Atkins, on this, is there a timeframe that it's dedicated to, or is it just till the acreage is built up? When's the end of the agreement? Do we know?
I don't know.
That's fine. That's okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
I think they're relatively open-ended, if I recall.
Yeah.
Yeah. So different ones could be structured differently. I think this was open-ended, so. All right. With that, if there's no other discussion or comments, Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Second matter will be Resolution R. 2017-14, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This is the General Fund in Auto and Gas Fund.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
The next matters are before you for a second reading. Number three will be Ordinance 2017-12, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract for the transfer of city-owned property located at 1200 to 1204 First Avenue to MJK Management LLC for redevelopment.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion or a second? Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, you saw this a month or two ago, and as a first reading, we went back and worked with the developer to repackage that a little bit. We had some concerns about the clawback provisions. That's now been resolved. It is a second reading. They plan to remodel and correct all of the current code violations, fix the roof, renovate the inside of the property to create at least two upstairs apartments and two to three commercial spaces downstairs. They will not be required to make significant changes to the exterior other than return it to code compliance. They do have until September 30th to do their due diligence. If they find conditions on the property that would prevent them from moving forward, they are not required to close. The purchase price is now $40,011.39. We do have a $40,000 credit towards the purchase price for complete renovation. Exhibit C gives a forfeiture schedule if they do not meet those obligations, so there are clawbacks if they don't meet their obligations, and it is now ready for your action this evening.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Atkins?
I just wanted to add that I like that forfeiture schedule. I'd love to see that in future contracts if we have similar buildings with someone like you.
We like that, too.
Thank you.
Good. All right. With that, Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Similarly, number five on your agenda will be Ordinance O. 2017-29, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an extension of the current contract with Smart Bill LTD for the printing and mailing of water bills.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
All right. Got a motion or a second. I know we've had a presentation on this last time. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Similarly, number five on your agenda will be Ordinance O. 2017-30, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an extension of the current contract with Smart Bill LTD for the printing and mailing of tax bills, also a second reading.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
All right. You're in order. Okay. Got a motion or a second. I know we had presentations before on this. Any questions or comments?
One thing, I just wanted to say, I think on both of these issues, I think next time around, I think it needs to go out for bids. Already told staff to do that.
Okay. All right. With that, Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Next matters, number six, is also a second reading, Ordinance Number O. 2017-31, an ordinance creating the position of Communications Coordinator in the unclassified service of the City of Middletown and establishing a pay range for said position.
Do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or comments? Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Next two matters are here for first reading. Next matter will be Ordinance O. 2017-32, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Ford Development Corp.
Your Honor, we are proposing to proceed with the University Boulevard Storm Sewer Improvements Phase 2, which consists of installation of about 566 feet of new storm sewer along Aberdeen and Russmar Court. This should alleviate flooding of several homes on those two streets during severe rain events. Four contractors submitted bids. Ford did submit the lowest and best bid. It is in this year's budget, and it will be ready for your action at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Atkins? All right. Our last item--
Last matter will be number eight, Ordinance O. 2017-33, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with Simon CRE Carp 12 LLC and O'Reilly's Auto Parts and waiving certain permit fees.
Your Honor, as you're aware, this project took a little while to come together, a lot of negotiations, both with city staff, with downtown Middletown, Inc., also with Historic Commission. It simply took a long time to get this where we needed it to be. As part of that negotiation, we've added a lot of expense to that project to comply with some of the historical aspects of downtown. Staff is recommending that we waive up to $6,000 in engineering, water, and sewer connection fees we will collect for plan review and things like that where we have an out-of-pocket expense, but we are recommending to help offset tens of thousands of dollars of increased costs that we added on that we waived those fees.
Any questions, Mr. Atkins? All right. Very good. And our last item this evening is a motion item. Ms. Strayer?
To request approval of a contract with BD Morgan, Inc. of Middletown, Ohio in the amount of $55,890 for the purchase and installation of a pole barn at Lufferson Park.
Okay. I know we had a presentation on this last time. Mr. Atkins, anything to add?
Nothing to add, Your Honor.
Okay. Do we motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Ms. Strayer, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
abstain.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.[1715.63]
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, 3-1, cut. Is that, anything else, Mr. Atkins?
Just make sure we adjourn to that.
Adjourn to recess until July 25th, 3:00 p.m., I guess in the lobby, to leave for the tour of Ryan Homes in Amelia. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Your Honor.
At 3:00 p.m.?
3:00 p.m., I think.